Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Come on in.
Good evening.
We're not going to wait here. We appreciate all of you coming tonight. And I'm going to call on Karen to give us an invitation to please drive.
Let's bow our heads, please. We're heavily honored. We come to you with thankful hearts for bringing us together this afternoon. As we prepare for this meeting, I ask that you fill each heart with your presence. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We'll have now we'll have. We'll now have the reading and approval of the previous minutes. Ashley, could you write things?
Absolutely not.
I was motioned that they may let it speak except for the short.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, I. Raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. There's no old business. Under new business, we have a recommendation for an appointment of a new secretary.
I would like to recommend Ashley Fredrick be the secretary of the planning commission.
We have a recommendation to appoint Ashley. Big shoes to fill there.
Oh, yes, for sure. Got to live up to those standards.
We will judge you next month.
Okay. I may or may not have written those last night.
Do I have a motion to accept that?
I'd like to move.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Congratulations, Ashley.
Thank you.
You start writing now.
Job should be.
Oh, yes.
So, we've got a lot to cover tonight. We have four items. And we're interested in what everybody has to say. The only difference between us and you is we're sitting here and you're sitting there. Your leaders in the county have decided that we represent you. And that's what we're here to do, to hear what you've got to say. We're establishing a record that will be reviewed by the commissioners. And then they will make the final determination. We're here to make a recommendation to them.
Can you turn off a little bit? The people behind me said they can't hear you.
No worries. Okay. How's that? So, I said that the only difference between us and you is we're sitting here and you're sitting there. The commissioners determined that we were good folks from a cross-section of this county that could represent everybody in the county. I'm probably the newest to the county, and I've been here for 20 something years. So, we want to ask others to declare, but I think some of them have been here longer than me. Harold.
Over and done.
So, we want to hear what everybody's got to say to the extent that we can. And what I would ask you to do is, we're going to hear a number of folks that want to speak. And I would ask you to, if someone has already said what you would like to say, to say, "I agree with that" to the person. If you have an exception to that, we'd be glad to hear that. We'll first have each case. We'll go through them one by one. We'll hear from the recommendation of the county. We'll hear from the applicant. And then we'll hear from people who have asked to be able to speak. Okay? When you get ready to speak, if you're the ones I called upon, I'm going to ask you to come forward. Ask me to state your name and your address. And then address any questions or statements that you have to us as the board, not to the applicant. We'll take your questions. We'll analyze those questions. If we have questions from what you've asked, then we'll ask the applicant. Is that? That's good. So, I want everybody to be respectful. We all have a right to be here. And we'll move along if this is done. Some folks may like what we have in terms of recommendation, and some folks might not. But it is what it is. And we'll make the best judgment we can based on what the recommendation is, the rules are, the law is, as we understand it, and the issues. Okay? Fair enough? All right. Very good. We're going to start out with RZ 190498.
RZ 190498 is, the applicant is Affordable Investments LLC. Agent is David Schouse. Address is 596 Gregory Drive. And they are requesting to go from agriculture to rural residential. It's 11.41 acres. And the applicant is requesting to rezone this piece of property because it is like an island of ag completely surrounded by rural residential zoning. The change in zoning will allow them to split the property and sell the houses. The recommendation for this project is the staff recommends approval of the rural residential request. As you can see on the map behind you, it is, that's the only added piece around. It is consistent with a comprehensive plan. And the additional comments that I would have is, in addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony in order that this information be made part of the record and shall be available for the board commissioners to review.
Got it?
Yes, sir.
Where's David?
He's in Phoenix.
Who's represented David?
Joey Rowland.
Okay, Joey. That's a tall order.
It is. I don't know what he's got me into, but I'm here.
All right. Tell us. Are you a partner with him?
Yes, I'm a partner. I'm a member partner. He's a managing partner, a partner of Affordable Investments. And he handles most of the day-to-day operations. I know, you know, about all the projects that we've got going on, which most of them have been in the same type project with buying stuff that's been dilapidated and rehabbing it, bringing up standards, selling it. And so far, it's worked out pretty good. This particular property was actually designed, or I guess you'd say designed, to be split in 1990 because those two dwellings was there. And then one of the dwellings got blowed, the roof got blowed off by a point eight O, and it's got a great foundation. We've already remodeled 596 and sold it. And then what we want to do now is, of course, we'll get an engineer to look at this foundation. We think it's good. We've had some people come out and look at it. And then we're going to build a new structure on top of this foundation and do the same with it, clean it up, make it look nice, and sell it.
All right. Wait. So, how are you going to divide the 11 acres?
As far as I know, he's going to split it between the two houses.
So, five and a half?
Roughly.
Point two oh five.
Well, one side, it's not, I don't think the line's going to be right in the middle. One may be four or so, or the other one may be a little larger. I mean, it'd probably be hard to get it split because the houses kind of lay on one side of the property. I haven't seen any surveys of exactly how it's going to be split. The houses are relatively, pretty close together, not real close together, but, you know, we ain't got a lot of wiggle room to move the property line and split a lot of different, you can't do it a lot of different ways.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. We have one person that would like to speak. It's a neighbor, Becky. Becky, come forward, please. Tell us your full name and your address, Becky.
Here, okay?
Just fine.
Hi. My name is Becky Ellendorf. I'm at 538 Gregory Drive. And we have a bunch of our neighbors in the back there, but they elected me as spokesperson here.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, no. So, actually, the Lowries who are in the back live directly next door to this property, and then I'm the one right next to that. And so, really, we didn't say that we opposed this at this point in time. We just had some questions and wanted to clarify some things that are going on.
Okay. What are your questions?
Okay. The first part of it was that right now, so the zoning request was for two residences there. And so, one of the residences has already been sold, I thought. I'm sorry, I was supposed to ask them questions, but, so I thought that residence was already sold. It was at 596. So, we just want to clarify, first of all, is the plan to be just one more residence on the existing foundation that's there? Or is there plans to be more than one residence?
Okay. And what's your next question?
Okay. The next question is, our concern at this point is that it's already been surveyed, and there's actually six different lots that are actually marked off on this piece of property. So, if there's going to be more than one additional house up there, then we have major concerns, particularly with like the water situations, the road situation. Our road is horrible. I mean, it's better than a lot of others in Pickens County, but there's just, it's a dead end road, traffic, all this traffic's going to be right by our house. And so, our main concern is if there's going to be more than the two residents that are already here.
How did you determine that there were six lots?
It's staked out up there already. And so, I know it's been surveyed already. And we went just yesterday and made sure that we counted off the ones that are marked out. So, there's actually six lots marked out already. So, if there's going to be six more, then I, we really have more concerns. The house that just sold there, sold for $500,000. And so, we're kind of concerned about what would be on those six lots if there, you know, if there's going to be an additional six lots there. Everybody that's on Gregory Drive has quite a bit of acreage. The smallest amount that anyone has on our Gregory Drive is like two and a half acres. I have five. And a lot of the people have four, five, six acres up there. And so, we're just concerned that we're going to have tiny six lots up there with mobile homes when there's a $500,000 house right there, and that would affect our property there. There's no county water up there at this point in time. Everybody, I think, past, for us, past us, is on, you know, well or spring water up there. So, that's one of the concerns. The road is a major concern, the street condition, that we have a big hill. As soon as you come on Gregory Drive, it's like straight, meeting cars there is very dangerous all the time. So, just adding the additional people there. If it's going to be one house, I think we're good with that. I mean, you know, but I'm concerned about the six lots that are already marked off there.
I understand. Did that cover it?
I think that covers everything I was supposed to say. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Will you ask my question next?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, what about that?
Well, he had entertained splitting it into smaller tracks. And we had entertained running, we'd actually got some quotes on it, running, getting Stasiels to run water down to split it up into one and a half, two acre track. The piece of property that sold, they took five, over five acres. So, five acres over that house is already gone. I don't know that.
But the lot's not been subbed back yet.
That, I really can't answer that. I don't know if that, we closed on it.
Yeah. Who would buy a piece of land that had not been moved? I mean, if I were the buyer and they were heading to subdue by it, I'd say I owned the same whole 11 acres.
I think they worked it out. Well, I think they worked it out with Hartman and all and got it worked out with them before they, they're getting what they're wanting. And I know it's five acres plus is what's going with that house. And it has already closed. What his intentions was, when I talked to him now, and the real estate agent says, "Well, we'll build this other house back and sell it as a whole, as a big tract." The only thing that may pop up, I didn't know they had marked out any lot lines or any stakes, and I'm not sure that's what they're for, but it may be. But there may be, there may be one, one and a half acre lot left at the, probably the northern end of it, if, if they don't take from the, from the house all the way up to the, to the next person's property.
Well, you don't have water.
Don't have water.
Everybody's got a spring or a well.
Well.
And you don't have sewage.
Nope. No, you got to build an acre and a half on well water for a septic system.
All right. Questions from the board?
The materials that were submitted said that the property is, at this time, worth 180 something thousand dollars. After this was completed, it would be a million dollars. So, I'm just going to go two, that maybe I'm just going to build an $800,000 house.
No. This piece of property we sold with the house sold for 500,000. And that's what the letter that David emailed me, he said, "This other house, when it's finished, it's got a larger foundation, and it should be a 500,000 dollar piece of property also." And that's where he got the million dollars for the two properties. So, both of them, obviously, he's got it designed to be in large tracks.
Becky, we're not aware that it's been something.
No.
I don't, I don't know how somebody buys half of something without knowing what it is. I mean, I never would think that. Would you?
No, but they, they worked it out with attorney. They've got a survey showing that they're buying five acres. I was at closing whenever they sold, whenever we sold the house with the five, five point something acres.
Well, but we have an 11 acre thing before us.
Uh huh.
And what you're telling me is, it's not 11 acres, it's something less than 11.
It is. It's less than 11 acres is what's been sold. It was five plus acres went with that house. That was part of the stipulations in the deal. We first wanted to advertise it as an acre and a half and sell the house, and then look at splitting those other lots up. And then whenever that real estate agent come to us, said, "This buyer wants five acres." And David said, "Make it work with five acres," and they gave us, paid us for the extra land, and we closed on it.
But it looks like to me, we're being asked to consider something that's not what it purports to be. We've got 11 acres, but it's not 11 acres.
I think it's, yeah, it's 11 acres, but something about the deed won't be finished or something until we get this split. And then we can give them their five acres, and then the other house can be built, and they'll get what's left of that. But it sold for five, five plus acres, the house did. I was at closing when it sold. Now, why it's not been surveyed out and already, you know, run through.
I understand. The application, though, before us is for 11 acres. And if it's already been divided, then it's not 11 acres, it's something less than 11 acres. But I don't know how we can make a decision on something that's incomplete.
I, to be honest with you, I can't answer that. I don't know. I can try to get with David and get more information. I think he's met with Wes. Wes, your department.
He is, yes. Or was. He was, yes.
Yeah. So, they, supposedly, they all had it all worked out where everybody was going to get what they wanted, and that's why they went ahead and got the close on the property.
I see. I think we need to defer this until we know more. I don't know how we can make a decision when you're in good conscience when you start this hearing without knowing what you're about to do.
It was submitted as the way I advertised it.
Do I have a motion to add a second?
Yes, all the recommendations are there. Would it be deferred rather than denied?
So, is it a motion to table it until the next meeting?
Okay. I'll make a motion to table it.
Is there a second?
I said.
Further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Call in favor? Thank you. Appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Everybody's welcome to stay, but you folks are in the back row there. You've had enough. Move on.
Thank you.
See you all next week. Thank you. All right. We'll close that hearing. And we'll now open a hearing on. Yeah. RZ 190499.
RZ 190499. And the applicant is Joseph and Diane Darren at 239 Green Ridge Road. The agent for them is Mark Runyon. The request is to rezone from agricultural to estate residential. It's 10.07 acres. And the applicant requests to rezone from agricultural to estate residential for the purpose of building a smaller house and having a more manageable lot acreage with the ability to sell the larger home with remaining 7.07 acres. The character area for this property is rural residential. And the staff recommendation is approval of the estate residential request. Additional comments are in addition to this memo. I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and the video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony in order that this information be made a part of the record and should be available for the board of commissioners to review. And on the map behind you, it shows the entirety of it and where the location where they want to build the house is kind of to the right of where the current house sits. But they just, due to health reasons, he has requested this rezon.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Are the Darnons here or Mark?
I'm Mark Runyon.
Stand up. Let us all hear you.
My name's Mark Runyon. I'm here representing Joe and Diane. So, he's actually out of town, attending to his father. He's got some health issues. Joe's wanting to build a smaller house because he's also found he's had some health issues as well. And so, he's trying to do some estate planning and survivorship planning. And that's the real reason why they want to split this up and make it a small parcel.
Okay. So, the notion is to sell all the three acres?
Correct. He wants to retain three acres, build a new house on that that will handle his survivorship as well as his health issues. And he's kind of running against the clock on it.
Okay. Questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
Allo, the application approved our proposed.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're good to go, subject to the commissioners' final decision.
Thank you.
All right. We'll close that hearing, and we'll start a new hearing on RZ 190503. Kevin Long.
RZ 190503. Applicant is Kevin Loner. The location is 26 Turner Road and then a lot right next to it on Refuge Road. The request is to go from rural residential to highway business. The proposed use is office warehouse for small business and inside storage. And the total amount for both lots is 1.44 acres. So, that would mean one of them is 0.68, and the other one is 0.76. The staff recommendation would be approval of the highway business request with the following conditions. Must adhere to current ADA parking requirements. Maintain 40 foot setback on rear property lines as required when highway business abuts rural residential. Maintain minimum of 20 foot landscape strips along right of way as required by Pickens County ordinances. In addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony in order that this information be made a part of the record and shall be available for the board of commissioners to review. If you will look behind you, there is, right there at the corner, those two lots, right there, the one in blue and the one, yes, right there, those are the two lots in question. The HB right next to it is a, it's a home occupation. It's, I think it's guys with shelter service. It's glass. So.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kevin Loner?
Yes, sir. I've got the packet, so I'll put those out to y'all. Okay. Thank you, sir. So, thank you for letting us come to the meeting tonight. So, I've been in the county for over almost 20 years. I've been a business owner here for that long. I own Nivek Services, founded 1-800-PACKOUTS, 1-800-TEXTILES. And the reasoning why we're asking for this change in zoning is that in Nivek, we keep a lot of our equipment indoors. And if you've ever seen our rigs going around, we have to be on a catastrophe response time, so we can't leave it outside. So, some of our, I own seven properties in Pickens County. Two of them are on Main Street. We've been there for many, many years. Nivek has been pulled off, and you see 1-800-PACKOUTS out there. Those are our buildings. We have buildings off of 108 and also Bing Dolls Drive. We're wanting to do this location with two buildings that make it very, very earth tones, a lot of landscaping, lush, that block the backside with the residential. And also, we want to keep it to where it's low lighted. We don't occupy these buildings every day. This is only for our equipment to be set inside to where we keep it ready, response ready for that.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Loner?
I have a question.
Hold on. We've got several people that have already signed up. Are you one of those? Let's see what the other folks have to say. David Jacobson? Come on forward here, David.
Hello, neighbor.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Dave.
Tell everybody who you are and where you live.
Well, I'm David Jacobson. I've been here about three years, and I live on Refuge Road, 2041. So, it's pretty close to that area, which, of course, is my interest in just trying to find out anything at all about what's happening. So, my first thing is to understand which two lots. I see a dark, a dark blue, that's the glass business. Is that right? And then the next two to the corner of Turner, right? That's the clear.
About that.
So, I don't know very much about this. I'm mostly here to listen. It sounds like the county has some ordinances that the person making the improvement will have to follow.
Yep.
Landscaping and so forth. Are there any, any health concerns? I know one of the neighbors or a couple of neighbors were asking questions regarding that, you know, if there would be disruption to build, would it affect, like, bring rodents around or disturb, and then create some sort of hazard in that regard? So, that's about all I got right now. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. Elizabeth Putzel? Come on up here, Elizabeth. Did I say her name right, Putzel?
Yes. First time ever. I'm Elizabeth. I live at 95 Turner Road.
And where is that relative to?
It's, there's currently a mobile home on that property, and I live directly across from that. So, this is very close to where I live.
Mobile home on the property in question?
Yes.
Okay.
So, my first question is, are they planning on removing the current home that is there? The second question is, where, would the traffic be coming in? Would it be coming off of Refuge Road or Turner Road? I already have Georgia Mountain Customs, two lots down. There's so much noise all day long. On Saturday, when I tried to sit outside and enjoy my property, there's lots of banging and clanging and noise, and there's more traffic. So, I am opposed to adding any other businesses to our road. And I have two small children, and next door to me, there's two small children that are playing outside. And there's already so much traffic on that road that they cannot even attempt to ride bikes or anything on the road.
Just like you're talking like Turner Road?
Turner Road. So, that's what my main questions are about where the traffic is going to be coming in and what kind of noises and that sort of thing are going to be happening on the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Loner, talk to us about the trailer. I presume it's going to go away?
I'm not aware of anything on this, these two lots.
Elizabeth Cutcell? Come on up here, Elizabeth. Did I say her name right, Cutcell?
Yes, first time ever, I'm a little bit right. I'm Elizabeth, I live at 95 Turner Road.
And where is that relative to?
It's, there's currently a mobile home on that property and I live directly across from that, so this is very close to where I live.
Mobile home on the property in question?
Yes. So, my first question is, are they planning on removing the current home that is there? The second question is where, would the traffic be coming in, would it be coming off of Refuge Road or Turner Road? I already have Georgia Mountain Customs two lots down. There's so much noise all day long. On Saturday, when I tried to sit outside and enjoy my property, there's lots of banging and clanging and noise and there's more traffic. So, I am opposed to adding any other businesses to our road. And I have two small children and next door to me, there's two small children that are playing outside and there's already so much traffic on that road that they cannot even attempt to ride bikes or anything on the road.
Just like you're talking like Turner Road?
Turner Road. So, that's what my main questions are about where the traffic is going to be coming in and what kind of noises and that sort of thing are going to be happening on the road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Longner, talk to us about the trailer, I presume it's going to go away?
I'm not aware of anything on this, these two lots. So, you know, there was a truck that was parked on it when we purchased the lot and it's been removed. But I'm not aware of anything on these two lots.
And a road entrance, where is that going to be?
The way the drawing's drawn right now is coming off of Turner, but we'd rather prefer it be off of Refuge, coming through there. One thing about it is, you know, we don't want to disturb any, we're a, you know, response-ready company. We won't work on the weekends or anything like that. If anybody's around, a lot of our buildings that we own in the county, a lot of people don't even know we exist. Because we keep everything neat and tidy, so the road problems won't be an issue because we have to keep everything response-ready.
You don't have any food there anyway, do you?
No, no, sir. And unless they eat diesel fuel, then we're all in trouble, so. But the thing is of that is just in our trucks, we don't store diesel fuel. And coming into the road, we don't have a problem making an adjustment coming off of Refuge into that, so we don't want to impact anybody on the Turner side. And another thing about the buffers for the landscape, one thing about it, I'm big on curb appeal on all my buildings, so what I would love to do, and I couldn't get the landscape architect, it's hard enough to get a rendering of what we want to do, but I want to get it to where the back of it, we have the Leland Cypress's that are really high. And if we have to, we don't mind going down the Turner side and blocking that off to where it's low visibility to our buildings. We're not planning to put any lights on our buildings because we don't do that. The way the cameras are now, we can see in the dark. But we're looking, there will be multi-million dollars worth of equipment going into these buildings. And what they are is they're humidifiers, so a commercial building, we do a lot of churches around the country, so when they have an issue, we have to leave and go get that and that's what's going to be mostly stored in these buildings.
Thank you. Douglas, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Is it Douglas or Darrell?
Douglas, Douglas, I was talking to an air, Stevens.
Don't see. Douglas, 957 Turner Road? Alright, we've got Steve Anderson. Okay, Steve, come forward.
I'm 321 Sisters Trail.
Sisters Trail.
And I think I'm going to restrain from my complaints because of the watershed that's going to happen when all this water comes in to my property. I was declining a permit to build a pond because the little creek on my property is declared as an upper watershed for Sharp Mountain Creek Trail Street. So, I'm not going to share a whole lot, but there's no way. All that water from that is going to come right onto that watershed.
Where is your property? In relation to this?
I'll just show you.
You know where it is, Darrell?
That's right, in the white area, see? If you go to, yeah, go down to the right, to the right, right there. So, I've already, I'm already dealing with a huge water issue coming off of South Woods that is running straight down into my property. I was, I was declining a permit to build a small pond. So, I've already been declining the issue to build what I would think at that point was retention pond, but it wasn't at that point. So, the additional acreage of asphalt and metal roofs is going to throw every bit of that water right onto me. I mean, it's plain sound, it's going to throw it right into me. You could go, I'd take you right now. And there's, there's tons of plastic bottles, spare tires that have washed down from South Woods. And it's also running off of Turner Road into, I mean, y'all have a topo? Would you like to pull up a topo?
I think we understand.
It's, it's watershed and I'm going to reserve my confidence, but there is a huge element of risk in throwing all that water on me.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, sir. So...
What have you thought about it?
Yes, sir, thank you for your concern with that. So, on our plaits that we have for the design for the buildings, we have a proposed gravel between the buildings to help with retention.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yes, sir. So, I'll give you a copy of it. And basically, our engineers, we have a full engineering firm that does all of our layouts for all of our buildings. And so, basically, he will handle all the watershed, everything going through, because that is a big deal as far as when you start taking vegetation around, what's going to happen in our landscape buffers, everything we have in our retention side, that is proposed to have gravel here to minimize the impact of the watershed.
Is there going to be a retention pond?
Sorry, you addressed us?
No.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I should have been talking to y'all.
Joe, show us what you were...
Yes, sir.
I couldn't see you.
So, if you go into the pack, right here between, that's all proposed gravel. And so, we have, this is the only parking we want and if we change to come off of Refuge, one of the concerns with the residents, which we'd like to do to come off of Refuge, is then this would be gravel as well, so that would minimize just the parking areas where it's on there.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Frank Martin? Come on up here, Frank. You're a Turner Road resident?
Yes, I am. Appreciate the time.
47 Turner Road?
Yes, sir. Want to give you guys a little bit of information if you don't mind? Hey, you didn't put your name together? I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if you, you guys would, as y'all read that, I can probably go ahead and start commenting if you don't mind this, this is so due.
No, we'd like to hear from you.
I mean...
We can all read, but we'd like...
Yeah, okay. Okay, what we're concerned with right there, people, is the volume of traffic we have right now on not only Turner Road, but Refuge Road. We're having extremely amount of traffic. We've got schools in the vicinity, we've got recreation in this vicinity, we've got a community center, we've got swimming pool. Now, really, if you really look at it, you've got a swimming pool within 200 feet of this proposed property. You've got, you know, the schools within 600 feet of the proposed property. And if you look at it real close, less than a half mile away, all the county functions from the school system, buses, any kind of maintenance comes right out of that road. It is unbearable and I think that most of my neighbors can attest to that. We're just a bit overwhelmed with the traffic. The drainage problem that Steve was talking about not only exists on his direction, but the roads themselves stand full of water every time it runs. It doesn't have any kind of drainage structure from the county. And so, we're really concerned with all...
Have you expressed those concerns to the county?
Yeah, they don't want to have these. Now, I'm serious, I'm not texting them. I mean, seriously, it's kind of inburden, but it's what it is. And they're going to have to put a huge drainage system in there to pipe it somewhere other than the way it's going on in the road. All cross drains get tangled up with debris and when it stops up, all the water, and it has ran out the road. So, we got, we got a big issue with traffic primarily. That's our biggest issue. But the other issue is the fact that you have got several areas in the community and the county to exist commercial business makes us question, why in the world do you want to impact a local community? And this local community has been there for many, many years. I've lived on that corner myself, I'm on the opposite corner of Turner Road, right on the cross from them. And we've lived there for 43 years. We've paid quite a bit of taxes, all of our, all of our residents have. Now, Ray and Jan live across the road from us and they have horses. And I know there's, everybody in here's probably seen the baby horses that they raise and how we enjoy them and such. It's just a small type community that we had rather not see more commercial come. Now, understand that the glass wire is there and the previous owner got that sort of grandfather in with no zoning in place at that time. And when that came in, I mean, there wasn't any way to stop him, but I'll tell you right now, the neighbors were not happy. And so, we knew it. But, you know, it's just sort of uncalled for. But anyway, the long and short of it, I've got 120-something signatures off from Refuge Road and Turner Road and South Woods and the surrounding community that disagreed with this being approved. And when you take that into consideration, as I know all of you do, and I know for a fact that in a one sitting here that wants a commercial building from their house, no wouldn't I? And I know that to be a fact. So, that being said, we want to let you read that letter and just understand, we just want to be left alone. We just want to be in our community, do our thing, do our work, come home, face the clock. That's all we ask, that's all we care.
Amen.
Thank you.
I think all of the issues there. Do you have anything that hasn't been said?
Well, I live two doors down and I just totally agree with what that gentleman said. Thank you. No more, no commercial.
Alright, questions from the board for the applicant?
Yes, these are for large buildings and the material stated that the warehouses were for small businesses, other businesses, how many and what type of businesses that would go into that?
Sure. So, we own Nivek Services, 1-800-PACKOUTS and 1-800-TEXTILES. We've been in the community for years. Our, a lot of our commercial buildings are next to residential spaces. One thing about it is, we understand about traffic, we understand about, you know, the expansion around the county. Our focus is with us is we're part of the county, we do a lot of business, we help the community out. So, the way the application's set up is for small business storage, but that's how we wrote it out because I didn't think anybody would know what Nivek was or having a storage of our equipment inside these buildings, and so that's how we written it out.
So, you're not going to be renting space to other businesses, other small businesses?
These are occupied by us.
And we're not going to be...
All my buildings that we have, we own and we operate them as ourselves. Now, I can't predict the future, I mean, if something happens in five to 10 years and if, God forbid, if I get sick or get hit by a bus, I mean, my wife's got to do something with them. And I'm just being honest with you, I don't want to be straightforward. But our plan is now, my son is kicking in more into Nivek and so he wants to grow that and he's in the audience with us here too. And so, this is for him, for his growth pattern as well, for the business.
But it's just your business issue, you are not going to lease to other businesses?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Only internal to our business.
And also it said inside storage, and so is it not, you're not renting storage space either?
How our, how our buildings are set up now, 1-800-PACKOUTS is basically if a fire, flood happens to a residential or commercial building, we store those items in these buildings until the property is completed. Sometimes we have these items in a building for over a year and a half to two years. That means when we bring the items into the building, we store it there, we might not touch it for another, we might even go into that area for six months. So, we're anticipating a very small impact with these buildings. Our traffic flow, we're not going to have employees there every single day, this is more of a storage area. I understand the gentleman and the folks assigned those things about having new commercial buildings beside you. This is more set up for, we want to do the minimalist impact as possible, we want to keep it to where you don't even know we're there. Yes, we are going to do our tone colors, we are going to, we want to put a buffers, but that's what we're looking to do.
So, this storage that belongs to other people, you charge fees for that or...?
Through the insurance company, yes, ma'am, as part of our old service.
Other questions?
Why would you want to build it?
Why would we want to?
You're right in the middle of a community when there's all this other property around.
Well, the property is getting harder and harder to find. The ones that have it, it's very tough to get it because they're looking to expand their facilities or whatever they have, you know, on. We're already on the north side of Main Street, you know, we come through to go to Dean Goss Drive a lot when we used to go over that corridor. So, we feel that this is, we're in the community, this is, you know, pretty close to all of our other buildings from 108 to North Main Street. So, that is why we're wanting to have it there.
And it's cheaper.
Yeah. Me like you're going to be on the north end of town, where's the other buildings are at?
We have some on the south side too, sir. Yes, sir.
Going through town and traffic and everything if you're having an emergency.
Well, a lot of times, it's less traveled on Refuge than it is on 515, so a lot of times we come, we don't bring, we don't bring, we don't bring, we're not bringing semi-trucks or anything in through this area, this is not what we do. Our semi-trucks are on 515, I mean, that's where we put them at.
There's no water or something, Diane? For a business like that?
No, ma'am. Questions, first a questions? Do I have a motion?
Can I answer that question? She just asked about the water and sewer?
Okay. They're to be addressed. If you advance past this, it will be addressed.
Have you considered a retention pond over the agenda?
Our engineers, when we talk to them, they've got it to where we're only putting in one bathroom per building just for, you know, if you need to go when you're getting the equipment out. So, we're not looking to run a kitchen or anything else or laundry facilities out of these buildings. So, talking to him, you know, they're putting in together, when they were talking about putting the gravel in to where they have their retention in, so he's very aware, we were very concerned with watershed because that's part of our business as well, you know, because we do outside water seepage coming into other places. So, we're very concerned with that and making sure it will be checked off by civil engineers gone through, you know, the county to make sure we have no infiltrations of the people around us, our neighbors.
Yes, sir, that would be part of the planning commission review process for any building construction plans and that sort of thing, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that comes from our office.
Further questions?
Yeah, I've got one. I didn't sign no paper, but I live right across the road where we stopped by doing it.
For over 50 years?
I understand.
There's already been turned down once for commercial.
I understand.
What question? Just a quick question.
They've been adequate with water flow.
Once it's zone commercial, can it be sold as commercial?
Hold on.
And where would you come off Refuge Road like the driveway?
And we have to paper, DC off and AC off.
Well, I think we've already addressed that. I don't think we're even coming off of Refuge Road, right?
In the drawing on our side plan, it's got it coming off of Turner, but what we could do is come into Refuge on that side. It'd be basically from wherever the glass shack or glass shutter guys or whatever that the building beside us adjacent would be down. We would try to come in to where it's not where we're, I don't say it's XL DC lane, but we'd have it to where it's easy for us to get off of there and come in there to where it's not impacting the traffic, slowing down, because I don't want any of our trucks or equipment being sitting on waiting to turn in there to where we have an issue.
Well, I think that you say is, you don't move every day?
That's right.
You move when you have to.
Yes, sir. A lot of our equipment that everybody know here, some of our equipment stays in our building for up to 12 months. We're hurricane-driven.
Yeah.
And it will stay there, it has to be plugged in and response-ready, but it doesn't move but maybe once or twice a year.
Further questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
I make a move, we deny it, I wouldn't want to get up there morning and see that building right in my face.
Thank you.
Hold on. Is there a second? Y'all don't give a second. Do I have a second? Thank you, forgot a second. The motion fails?
You're kidding.
You're kidding.
You're absolutely kidding me.
Yeah.
They've got to have a second.
There's not one. If you settle down, where you live.
Hey, the liability of water coming onto our property is huge, so think about that before you even have a topo out showing where the water flows, think about that.
Remain, remain, remain... Remain, remain, um, remain respectful, okay? We're all neighbors here.
We can be calm and respectful, but we, we still want to lose our community.
Thank you, thank you.
We are, we are making a recommendation, or not making a recommendation. This will go, the record has been established here, will go before the full commission and they will make the final determination. Sometimes they agree with what we recommend and sometimes they don't. But they have a record here, it's all been recorded, they will see exactly what you both have had to say and they will take that into further consideration. Without a second, then all that happens is that the recommendation of the planning commission goes forward to the full commission and they will make the final determination. It's not the end of the world.
What is the recommendation of the planning commission?
Yeah.
What is? Say that's what.
It was, the planning commission recommended approvals.
Approval?
Yes.
Where does the water go? That's...
Where do y'all live?
Yeah. We live all over the county.
That's what I'm talking about, that's right.
When it goes commercial, it'll be at home.
If he, if he sells us the next week, that is y'all approved commercially, he can put anything you want to him.
That's right.
We are not the final determiner.
Yeah, but you're, you are appointed to represent the public and if you don't represent the public, you're deferring your dying abilities and I don't care what you say.
That's right.
Thank you.
The people, we had a motion, we did not have a second. I'm going to close this hearing and we'll move on to the next one. Thank you very much. All right.
You had a question, did you ignore it? Yeah, a question.
Everybody had a, everybody?
This is a sample. Every person to a specific area. If we not sell, unless there be anything else, so maybe give them.
That's right. Yeah, they can sell us to the neighbors. Sell, take a lot of dollars. Please, don't ruin our neighborhood. I live like one on two, two doors away. Please don't. You're recommended. Thank you for standing up for y'all.
All right, we're going to open a hearing. If I could ask, if I could ask everybody, please be respectful in the next hearing. Lady? If I could ask everyone to be quiet, please. All right, we're going to open a hearing on RZ 190504.
Okay, RZ 190504, applicant is Tanner Cummings with West Holdings LLC. Agent is Wes Riles with Smith Planning Group. Location is 930 Upper Salem Church Road. Request is to rezone from agriculture to highway business. Proposed use is a micro resort. The character area is suburban residential.
Start over again, please, so we can hear you.
RZ 190504, applicant is Tanner Cummings, West Holdings LLC. Agent is Wes Riles with Smith Planning Group. Location is 930 Upper Salem Church Road. Request is to rezone from agriculture to highway business and the proposed use is to create a micro resort. Staff recommendation would be approval of the highway business request with the following conditions. Must adhere to current ADA parking requirements, must maintain allowed buffers between disliked zonings. Lodging servicing, lodging services units shall be limited to a maximum of 30 units. All county, state and federal environmental regulations and permitting processes must be followed. The following permitted uses allowed under highway business zoning will not be permitted on this site. Adult businesses, animal hospitals, auction facilities, contractor establishments, daycare, extension, extermination services, retail services open for the public, storage services, gas or diesel fueling stations. Additional comments or in addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and the video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony in order that this information be made part of a record and shall be available for the Board of Commissioners to review. Behind you is the current zoning map of the property. As you can see, it's surrounded by an array of zonings. You go up one. This is their proposed map. Um, all of you guys should have a copy of that. That's how they have got it laid out so far as far as their units are, their units are.
And your recommendation here?
It's approved.
Approval, okay. All right, who's representing the applicant?
That's me, I am the applicant, Tanner Cummings.
All right, Tanner, how are you?
Good. My name's Tanner Cummings, this is my wife, Melissa. Mind if I pass through that? As I do that, anyone who is interested to look at what I'm handing out is on the website, cfresort.com. You can see that at the bottom of the page in the link. And then I have some others, if you want to grab one of these. Any other?
All right, Tanner, tell us about it.
Yes, so, um, I should probably start by explaining, uh, a micro resort is a deconstruction as you saw on the site plan. The units and amenities are as small and minimalist as they can be because when it's too big, you lose the nature and the value of it. We desire to build these 22 units and 15 amenity structures over four phase build sequence. And so, if you go to the next page, that's just a description of us, parents with few kids. Our core values are hospitality and service, we are small business owners and we've been, uh, serving in our church for a little over a decade. Next page is just simply defining our goals. That waterfall in the land is beautiful and we want to preserve it and introduce people to it. The, the other goal we have is to partner with businesses that are already existing in Pickens County and Jasper and...
What kind of businesses are those?
Um, some of the things we are already engaging with, um, Chelsea Economic Development is just getting an understanding of things that we could provide like, um, caritax center and bonds, I haven't addressed them directly, but things that we, I don't intend to operate in kitchen at this time. And respect and serve, which includes our guests, but also the community in the surrounding area. Our team, on the next page is Cluck Design, which is our architectural group. Smith Planning Group, who is here with us tonight. There are planning and engineering group that have constructed the site plan and helped us along the way in this process of rezoning. And then CBS Specialist is a building group that's very familiar with North Georgia and they will be our builders. The next page is the site plans. You can see how it's laid out on the property, small footprints, minimalist disturbance, um, to avoid damaging the canopy and preserve nature as much as possible. And the major intent is that none of these would be visible from the street or from any of the neighboring, uh, community. For, for both, not only the community, but also the guests.
What, what's the square footage of each unit?
Most, most of them are approximately 800 square feet. Later phase, we, we would intend maybe a two bedroom or three. We don't have specific designs of those, but we don't intend them to be, uh...
More than 1,800.
More, more than 1,800.
The footprint, no?
Thank you. So why we chose Pickens, uh, I actually grew up in, my father worked for Young Life Ministry and I've been to Sharp Top Cove many times as a kid. But Pickens as a whole, yeah, not only obvious marble capital, we've, we've seen some of that on the property, which is a wonderful thing to see. But just, it's such a wonderful place to share, uh, the nature. So, um, there is some consistency as you saw on the mixed map of the zoning. And it's a very friendly, uh, community from what I've seen. So the next, uh, getting into addressing some of the concerns, so the traffic and congestion, we would redirect towards, on the map, it's not Airport Road, but there is a sign out there that says Airport Road. Basically, we would direct all our traffic to go back towards the airport to leave, not towards the gravel of Upper Salem that continues southbound. There is plenty of trash, not only on the property, but continues to build as I've seen it over a very short period of time. We would, uh, be directly incentivized to not only clean it up now, but keep it clean. And then the noise, we have included, um, designs and tools to keep that at a minimum. Not only did we apply to say no, no larger gatherings than 25, um, to keep the noise at a minimum, but if you see the next page title, noise, there are devices that we would have installed that would monitor a consistent high decibel level and would report that to us and we would handle that directly. The, the next page is just the zoning as you see. And we have, as mentioned, some self-imposed restrictions prohibiting ourselves any future things for highway business that we have zero interest in developing. The next page is density and traffic and this kind, kind of goes over, um, what we've estimated, um, the volume, but also the units per acre, what it currently is for agriculture and what our proposal is. That's all I have. Thank you for letting us present.
All right. Questions from the board?
How do you define an immunity structure?
The, the ma, the majority of the amenity structures will purely be supplied electrical. They are 200 square feet. It'd be something like a library or, um, we do have plans for a... A small workout room. Just things that you would find in a larger, uh, resort, but we will break it into a smaller structure that people can go visit that isn't attached to their unit. But no, no plans for septic or water access for those units, it would just be purely, um, electrical.
In each one of the units, for lack of another word, that's being defined as lodging, all of those are all in separate, septic tank?
Uh, that's correct, that would be.
The county's recommendation says that lodging services units shall be limited to a maximum of 30 units. Was that anticipated that we'll be 30 septic tanks?
No. Not all of them will have, not all of them will have that kind of facility.
But it was an expectation of the 22 septic tanks?
Unless any, unless they apply for an ETD system. Or if they could tie them to the, um, to the city.
Would this zoning designation allow for this property to ever be subdivided?
No, it does not. And it would remain in, in what's made, they can't, they can't like get rezoned to highway business and then in five years, still have five acres with one of the units on it.
Okay, the materials that you submitted said that there would be 650 feet, square feet, and now you're saying they're 800, possibly 1,800 square feet?
So our initial, the, the initial look that we were doing was doing, we initially thought we'd do 650. We were still in, working with our architecture firm about kind of what we could do to get like a little one bedroom. They kind of said, in order to make it little bowl without being too tiny, it's at 800. So, and then, and I followed up, but we weren't more clear. We'd always kind of anticipated that we would do maybe like a 1,200 square foot, two bedroom and maybe like 15 to 18 square foot, three bedroom. But our goal is to keep it as small as possible, we actually don't want big buildings because the goal is really to have an immersive experience. You know, we're not trying to, we don't want yards, we're not going to be cutting down extra trees, like the goal is to make it as immersive and, and, and nature and to preserve the beauty of the land.
So tell me what the micro hydroelectric power generation system is?
So, that is more of a, an optimistic idea for many, many years from now. Uh, I was a, uh, alternative fuel vehicle, uh, concentration major in college and a lot of my peers and colleagues were thermodynamics. That appeals to me to use passive water flow to generate electricity.
So would you be demanded up the creek to get this water?
Absolutely, there's state waters that we can't touch.
This is also a watershed, you know, you're part of it is.
That's correct.
How many acres of this is in the watershed?
Offhand, I, I can't tell you.
Is that going to limit where you can purchase septic tanks?
We are required to state 50 feet off of rest of vegetation, which we do.
What's the water supply of these units?
They'll be...
Wells?
Wells.
How many wells?
Projects like this before, it depends on how much gallons of water we get with a well, but we've done three or four wells for a project of this size with this many units.
How long do you anticipate, anticipate people staying in these, in that time?
That was part of, we include the application, was a maximum of 30 days, but we anticipate most of them would come for, you know, a weekend or for maybe up to a week, that's the goal, you know, we're, we're not trying to create long-term housing.
So we're not going to see school buses stopping?
Say it again?
Won't we see the school buses stopping?
Yeah.
Is there an administrator on site?
The plan is to have a const, what we're calling concierge or administrator on site. We have not defined times, um, that's the intent with the phasing build, that, um, as this project and business proves itself, we would then implement the helping hands and, and, uh, jobs that we need to operate it. In time, initially, yes, at least one for certain times during the day.
So you must have done some, I mean, is it a big investment? You must have done some market research to determine that, that something like this is in E and Y, my people?
Yes.
What does that person look like, demographically?
Oh, in terms of a guest?
Yeah.
Yes, so a lot of the guests that we see in other successful places are they're a little more advanced in their career, a little older, but not twenty-somethings. These are people that have done their work and effort and they would like to go stay in a quiet peaceful place in our circumstance, away from their children, for actual quiet. So that is our ideal. Yes, but we, we of course make no restrictions, especially observing the very large older demographic here. I have a full expectation that this might be an opportunity for people to observe Pickens County as a potential area for their long-term stay as opposed to other North Georgian areas.
More questions for the applicant? All right.
Can we ask questions?
I've got several people here who want to ask questions. Homer Sewell. Homer? Come on up here, Homer. Winston's on the back road.
Yeah, it was about all that was left. I'm a guy.
That was where you live, Homer? I've got it here, but everybody wants to know where you live.
Eleven ninety-three Upper Salem Church Road, right adjacent to the property that we're talking about.
Okay. How many acres do you have?
I have eight point two acres. Been here for forty years. I don't have any problem with growth. But what I am concerned, and I couldn't hear back there, I should have worn my hearing aids, I guess.
Address it to us and then we'll, we'll address it to them.
Is what was the statement or questions about septic tank or sewer and water? I missed that. Knowing that there is a requirement in the county for an acre and a half to have a septic tank or water. And I've walked every bit of that property in the past forty years. I don't see where any of it would perk if they were going to do septic tanks. I think it was twenty-two, twenty-two units we were talking about putting in. Is there going to be a, asking the county for an extension of sewer lines out there and a water line out there?
Well, the county doesn't have any sewage at the moment.
Doesn't have
That falls on the city.
So I'm just concerned about what are we doing for these twenty-two units for sewage or septic tank and water?
Were those, those issues would have to be addressed. At the time, it was determined what was going to be required there. And I think, living on a well myself, a well depends on the size of the well, how many people it can serve.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I want. I was just concerned about what we're going to do about those twenty-two or more units.
So your primary concerns are the sewage issue now and in the future as well as water sewage?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I got here late. I couldn't sign up to speak, but I certainly do would appreciate rather the opportunity to do so if that
All right, let's get through here. Let us get through the folks that did sign up.
Yes, sir.
And then you can tell me whether or not there's anything
I appreciate.
Different.
Thank you.
Linda? Linda, come on up here, Linda. I'm sorry, I cannot pronounce.
That's all right.
Your last name is almost as tough as mine.
What is yours?
Rebel.
It's not even close.
You live on Black Bear Lane?
I do. We live on three thirty-three Black Bear Lane.
And where is that relative, where is that relative?
It's up in, it's about a mile and a half from the property. And we moved here, my husband was in the military, we've traveled all over and we moved to Jasper. We came here by chance and we saw this as a beautiful, small community, full of small businesses, friendly people, a lot of rural. And I appreciate you saying that this is a lovely, you know, lovely, beautiful place. And that's why we moved here. We had other choices to move to. We could have gone to L A J, which has a lot of rentals up there, a lot of rental communities or Blue Ridge or other areas. But we chose Jasper because they didn't have that. And I think my question to the commission here is what do you foresee going on for Jasper? Do you see us becoming a community of rental resorts as other cities like L A J? Do we see us becoming another costumery resort where we have rentals and people coming in or, you know, just for the weekend? I just urge you all to look long-term because this resort is approved and I've seen your website and everything. Look long-term and what do we see as a future for Jasper is all I ask you to look at.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Pierre.
Max West. Come on up here, Max. You're up, Upper Salem Church Road.
Yes, sir. Eleven sixty-nine Upper Salem Church Road.
Where is that relative to?
It's Stradecroft Road.
Take a call.
This property. I'm proud of this property too. But I've been there twenty-two years. I have a lot of concerns, like Homer said, with the sewage. I mean, twenty-two units, twenty-two septic tanks, the Shark Web, and that's right on the head of Shark Mountain Creek. That's a lot of, a lot of people downstream from that. Very steep property. There's no power on the property. There's no water on the property. I just
You mean the wells?
Well, there's no wells.
Water flow
There's no city water, but that's why I want wells. I want a well myself. But I don't see how they can say that they can, there are two or three wells for all of this. It's going to be more wells than two or three down the drain. You start poking more holes in the ground and other people with some wells, because that's the only option we have. You know, I might lose my water. It has happened.
How deep is your well?
It's two hundred and eighty feet.
Oh, gosh, you're shallow, aren't you?
Right, compared to, right. Because I don't have the best well in the world. I can't pump mine dry. I have been before. But also it's roadway. We just have that road towering there. It always worked on hand and if they do decide to put city water or something, then they're going to be cutting the road out. And it's a very narrow, tricky road. And for people that don't know it, it's an anchor trap. And you know, there are not lights. You know, like City is down the country, it's north. It's very curvy and tight of a road. You know, I just kind of have to turn about the track also. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Kincaid. Come on up here, Nick.
Coming along, coming along.
You're on Upper Salem Church?
Yeah, twelve seventy-five and my mom's at twelve seventy-nine.
And where are you relative to this piece of?
The bottom corner. Because my driveway is at, almost at the bottom corner pen and my mom's driveway is letting me go. Her driveway goes out the creek, down, going toward the lake down that way. And I'm just, like everybody's talking about the traffic. I get killed nearly twice a week when people think they can drive a hundred on that road. I just like the what area, whereabouts the entrance is going to be in relation to kind of where we're at. The amount of traffic impacted with the zoning change. I just wonder if that's going to have an effect on us because where we're at, we can shoot whatever anybody want to do and all that, doesn't matter. Is there going to be any effects on us or any such as that, like, you know, like I said, that's pretty rough, pretty rough property. It's going to be, it'd be a challenge. But it's just, if we get too much traffic on that road, it's going to be a nightmare because it's already bad. It's just but like I said, that's pretty much all I got too. They didn't address the sewage and all that stuff, so.
Septic tank is going to be addressed?
It'll be tricky.
Yeah, and it's going to, it's going to limit. It'll be somewhat self-limiting in that regard.
Yeah, I'm kind of more curious as to like where the entrance way is going to be and such as that.
All right. Talk to us.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Talk to us about where the entrance is going to be relative to this property.
Sure, go for it. Yeah, that's a great question. We definitely understand that. And again, we want to, we want to be good neighbors as well. So that's part of it is also even thinking about septic, I'm sorry, thinking about septic and all of these is that if there is something that we can't do, we're not going to ask more from the land that we can do. So if we end up saying, wow, we can only do septic for ten units, then we do septic for ten units. That's also why we're doing really small ones and we're not trying to make five bedroom homes that are going to have five or six bathrooms. And the goal is to actually have really small units with smaller amounts of requirements. So then in regards to the lane, our main entrance is going to be in that left-hand corner, right there, exactly, so that we get people off the road as soon as possible. And then we are actually going to be, we actually are purposely wanting to, not that we want to spend more money, but we want to actually make roads inside the property so that we're keeping people off Upper Salem Church Road and keeping them off of, off of all of that big road and keeping it within the property instead. So.
Thank you. All right. Is it Gretchen?
Gretchen.
Gretchen, come on up here, Gretchen. Gretchen West, where do you live, Gretchen?
I live directly across from this property at eleven sixty-nine Upper Salem.
You live next door to that other gentleman?
No, I live with that. And he addressed most of my problems, but
But not all of them?
A lot of them. I'm looking at your map.
You didn't give him proper instructions?
No, you called him first. I'm looking at the map here and it looks like there's a road that's going to be entering into Upper Salem right below my driveway. I'm not happy about that.
So, so help me, let's just get back to our map there.
Yes, sorry.
And so
My driveway is in that very sharp curve.
Right here?
Yep.
No, down.
Yep, down here, down here. That little sharp curve, right there. That's my driveway. Yes, and according to this, there's a road that's going to come out here. But it also appears that you're going to build, that they're going to build a road between the road and the creek, which I really don't see how because it's straight down.
Hey, where would that be?
And I'm curious about that.
What road?
The top of the falls.
Up there?
It comes around. That little road, right there, that road right there.
That's in, can I take a side?
I'm curious at how they're going to pull that off because that's straight down.
You mean the terrains?
Straight down. You can stand on Salem and look straight down to the bottom of the falls. Also, I'm curious about this being a quiet area. What are they going to do when the military comes in to the airport and fuels up at two-thirty in the morning? Now everybody's house is shaking because that's what we deal with now. We're used to it. We live there. We're used to that. But when you come to a retreat for quiet, how are you going to do, how are you going to deal with that?
Yeah, they come over my house too.
Yeah, and we like the military. We like them coming in and using our air force. But that's a concern. How are you going to sell quiet when you have military coming in reviewing and other planes? And also I have concern about this is flood plain and you've got cabins on that. How are you going to build flood plains on cabins? How are you going to build cabins on the flood plains? That's my questions.
Thank you. You need to talk to that fellow you live with now and give him proper instructions. All right, thank you. Sir, can we address all the
No, sir.
Issues?
No, sir.
What is yours?
Mike.
Come forward and speak. Come forward.
My name is Mike Mcgell. I live twenty sixteen Upper Salem Church Road.
And where is that relative?
That is about a little more than half a mile from it. When Frank Lloyd Wright went to Sedona, Arizona, the first thing he said is nothing should ever be built here. And the reason that he said that is because it was a natural wonder that could not be replaced and once destroyed, gone. I'm assuming everybody here has been to Pageant Falls. Yes?
Oh, wow, you should be.
Well, let me just say this. If you've never been there, you don't have any business approving this at all. Because it is a natural wonder. It's a two-hundred-foot fall. We're not talking about some stream with a few rocks and water falling over it. We're talking about something unique in this state. Found one place, Pageant Falls. That's it. This will ruin that. You know it.
Sir?
I know.
Sir, sir.
I, I'm good, I'm good.
No, no, you're not.
I'm good.
You're not good.
Now
You're not listening.
Here's the other thing I want to say and then I don't have anything else to say.
And you address us.
The effort had been made for the last twenty-something years to keep that road from being paved due to there being a dam that was built in the eighteen hundreds by the Pageant family. Now all of a sudden, half that's paved and we're right to the site in question. So yes, I'm upset about this because some things you do and some things you don't do. And I agree with Frank Lloyd Wright when he said, nothing should ever be built here, not because he hated capitalism and didn't want anybody to make any money, but because it was an irreplaceable site. And if y'all have never been out to Pageant Falls, you gotta go. We're not talking about a fall from here to the floor. It's a two-hundred-foot fall with wetlands at the bottom that form a basin throughout the whole Upper Salem Church Road area. And if this is developed, it's gone.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Prue. I thought I'd signed up when I got here, when I signed up on the list to speak. So evidently I didn't sign up. But I am a resident of Upper Salem, if I could speak.
Please, sir, pardon me. Are you going to share anything that has?
I have some questions and then I'll sit down.
I'd like the same opportunity, please, because mine hasn't been addressed.
But if you were here at first, you didn't sign up to speak?
Yeah, but I feel like people are thinking everything can be developed and they're missing the point that you obviously said that the septic and the wells are going to dictate and that terrain is so steep, no one's going to build on Pageant Falls. I don't, I'm in the business, I believe they, they're going to be limited to where they build. I'm for if my land touches, right to theirs. And I just feel like if it was going to be a full development, then maybe I'd have concerns.
Thank you. All right, I'll allow you
Mike.
One.
Me, please, because I've got something to say nobody else has said.
No, I'm fine. Just being the last to.
Thank you.
Your name, sir, and address?
David Walker, eighteen eighty-one Upper Salem Church Road. And I've heard, I live approximately half a mile on the gravel part of the road that they're talking about. You're talking about twenty-two units. My question is, y'all are, this partial is forty-eight
Sir.
Forty-eight point forty-two acres. How much of that is wetland and how much of that is building property? That's, that's my main question. I'll say ditto to the rest of the folks. But that's, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Okay, do I have to get up?
You do.
I do, yeah. All right.
And you got to tell us who you are and where you live.
I'm Jenny Aronson. I don't live on Upper Salem Church Road. I live, I need to address you. I live on Pettit Road, which is, I'm probably two miles from the falls if you walk it, you know, by the road. I'm probably half a mile. It's a roadblock. Only thing I want to say is I have walked, believe it or not, I know I don't look like it, but I have walked extensively over there.
You've got tennis shoes on.
There are so many rare plants over there. I mean, and you're talking about doing ADA compliant and doing, you know, if you're doing a business, it's going to have to have curves, I assume, along the street right there. But you're going to be clearing a lot of land, I'm sorry. You're going to be clearing a lot of land and there are a lot of plants over there that are endangered. I mean, they're rare plants over there. You don't ever see and you have to, you know, I mean, you have to appreciate them. I mean, it really is, as that other gentleman said, it's a, it's a wondrous place. You really do, all of you, before you approve anything, please And you really do, all of you, before you approve anything, please, just go over there. Go over there, stand on the side and look down. I mean, better yet, I bet they give you permission to walk on it. And you ought to do that, and just see what all's there. You won't believe all the mountain laws. And I know you guys, that's what you're looking for. I know it's beautiful, I wouldn't want anybody telling me, I'm sorry. I wouldn't want anybody telling me what to do with my property, but this is a place that needs to be preserved. It really does. I'm serious. I'm, you need to go check it out. Thank you.
Well, you know, our, our job is to hear what the applicant's got to say, just to hear what the meeting has got to say, take all of that into consideration, to make what we believe to be the best recommendation on the part of the county to the commissioners. And then they, in their wisdom, make the final decision. So.
But you should go see it. That's the whole thing. If you haven't seen it, you don't even really know what you're talking about.
I'm standing for it.
That's, I mean, that's kinda basic, I'm standing for it.
Alright. Do I have a motion?
I have another question. If you have syrup like this, and you have, put under for you, once your little cabin's there, then how do you not know how much of this is wetland? How much of it is watershed? How much of it is flood plain?
We, we do.
We, we do, and there's approximately half an acre of wetlands. There's three thousand eight hundred and seven linear feet of intermittent and perennial streams. We have ruled that this designated stream is not a trout stream by an environmental scientist who has been on-site. Um, in terms of the flood plain, we're keeping all structures outside of the flood plain.
And runs as well?
Runs as well. Crossings would be bridges on, outside of the rest of vegetation.
Have you done any perp tests or anything on that property?
We have. We've had extensive tests done throughout the property, um, both for phase one, but also subsequent phases to determine the, the ability to put septic on there. Um, it actually has come back positive for conventional systems, where conventional systems are not permitted. Uh, we do have the ability to use a drip-type system, which minimizes the footprint. It also keeps that closer to the units.
What is, what is the drip system?
Yeah, it's, you know, conventional system, you're burying it down eighteen inches, the drip system. And I don't, we were obviously working with a consultant to design these systems. But the drip system is just, it, it allows for, it sort of doesn't perk well, to use a different system that releases the, the water at a much lower rate. These are permitted by the environmental health, they'll be reviewed and inspected, permitted.
So is that more likely to get into the groundwater and into the stream?
No, it's, it's an approved environmental health, you know, system for, for septic. It's usually not chosen, because it's a little more expensive if you got the conventional. That's the idea. And like you said, most of these will be conventional drip system, drain lines.
So with this, this is not very level property to begin with, is there gonna be a problem with during construction, uh, getting these contaminated?
So, so we will submit to the, the state, George Soil, uh, will be putting in cell fence if needed at all. I don't anticipate it, um, putting in sediment basins. But again, like, we're trying to minimize any kind of disturbance here. And so there will be a double row of cell fence. Oftentimes, we, um, in these cases, we'll mulch the trees that are being removed and place them in between the double row of cell fence to make sure we capture all runoff and any kind of sediment. So. And that gets inspected too, throughout the process. So if there are any issues, that gets addressed.
Do you have any plan drawed about where the cabins are gonna be, and that kinda stuff, the roads and everything?
Yes, sir. And, and the challenge, you know, with roads, um, is we need to have, you know, emergency services. And that's why the roads are being installed where they are, to get emergency service vehicles to these units. And if, if it was our, if it was our choice, we would have trails and paths, kind of a central parking area that everybody could leave their vehicle, and they kind of immerse themselves in nature and hike it. But we are going, yeah, there's a very steep terrain there. We're gonna need to use retaining walls. We're gonna need to cut back some slopes pretty deep to bench in these drives, but they are gonna, they are kind of following contours and not necessarily going up and down the terrain, kind of picking an elevation and basically running, um, at that same elevation.
Mr.? Before you call for a motion or a vote, can I ask for a brief recess?
Sure.
I don't know if you're finished with your questions or the, I don't know, hold on your layups.
We, we've covered everybody.
We have a two-minute recess.
Two-minute recess. Okay, we're, we're back in order now? Do I have a motion? We have a motion that's been made to deny the request, recommendation.
Yeah, I know that's right.
Is there a second?
Sir?
There's this motion and a second to deny the request. Is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please raise your right hand. Is there anyone against the motion? Motion carries.
Call, call for abstentions. Call for abstentions.
You had, and apparently you did.
Uh, studying.
Abstention.
I got it.
Alright. So our recommendation, the action of this board goes to the full commission, and then they consider all of the evidence that has been put forward, and then they make the final determination.
When is that meeting?
Pardon?
One right, meeting three places.
When is that meeting?
August seventeen.
August seventeen.
Same place?
Yeah, upstairs, yes, sir.
Any further comments from the board? Further public comments? Y'all are quiet now. Do I have a motion to adjourn? What?
What was your recommendation, the question here?
Oh, the recommendation, the, the motion was to deny the request. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm loaded for adjourn.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor? Raise your right hand.